The city commission, the roll call please. Well, for, actually for September 17th, 2014. Roll call please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Ma.
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here.
Thank you. We have anything for future agenda items for these study sessions? Hearing none. Go ahead into our discussion item, which is the sanitary sewer master plan and sewer rate adjustments.
Sorry?
Well, no, you're on time.
Okay, so thank you for having this special meeting. We're a little early this morning, uh, this afternoon. Thank you for coming to the meeting.
It feels like morning.
Yeah, it does, especially if you traveled across country already today, right? It feels like morning. So, thank you very much for taking the time to get through this. We wanted to bring back to you the discussion of the sewer master plan and the rates. So we've got, Jim's gonna spend a fair amount of time going over, kind of, the justification for our capital program because we think it's important for you to understand it's, while it affects rates, there's a backside to that. It has an impact if we don't have a funded capital program. There's impacts to that. So we want to make sure you fully understand that. And then John Gilarducci's here as well, and he's gonna take the second half of the presentation and talk about the rates, similar to what we've already presented, but add a little bit more detail based on what we heard from you before. Also wanted to acknowledge, we've got Martin Nalida and Eric Hand in the room. Eric Hand is our wastewater, stormwater supervisor, so he's very interested in the outcome, as are the others. Eric Orgrin, who's been the project manager, is actually not in the room today, so he's coming though, I think, so he'll be here soon. So, we have had a good team on this master plan and on this rate study, and I think this is the culmination of that. And we hope to, the objective is to get to a place where later in today, tonight's second meeting, which is the commission meeting, we'll have both the ordinance for adoption of the master plan and a resolution to adopt rates. So with that, Jim, can I, oh, these first couple of slides are mine as well. So, just a reminder that, you know, this sewer, sanitary sewer master plan has been 10 years since our last master plan update. We've got a fair amount of growth since that time, and we've got a fair amount of growth yet to plan for. So, that's, the timing of this is, it's important for us to move forward with an updated master plan. And so, that's, that's all that's on that slide.
Well, thank you, John. I want to start off by just presenting and discussing with you a little bit some of the problems that we encounter in operating a sewer collection system. Number one, we run into what we call hydraulic deficiencies. So this is an inability of the sewer system or pump stations to handle the flow that's getting to it. You know, it's for a variety of reasons, but basically, we're saying that certain items may be hydraulically undersized. And we do a lot of modeling to figure out where the problem areas are and to determine, you know, what do we need to do to remedy those. The other class of problems we run into in collection systems are what we call structural and operational deficiencies. And these are problems with the pipe itself and with the manholes. And we'll go in some more detail on each of these. In addition, we have deficiencies that occur in pump stations. Pump stations are complex systems. They have mechanical pumps, they have mechanical engines in them, and electrical controls, instrumentation, and a lot of parts that potentially can go, can go wrong or wear out. And the fourth category that unfortunately we all face in Oregon and Washington is excessive INI. And INI, again, is infiltration and inflow, or inflow and infiltration. That is extraneous water that gets into the collection system and takes up some of your Let's start off with the hydraulic deficiencies. From our modeling that we did, we modeled the 10-year future condition and a number of other conditions, but this is the one that guides our improvements. And you've actually seen this figure before. The red lines indicate pipes that have excessive surcharging and/or flooding. And by flooding, we mean potential flow coming out of manholes or backing up into basements. So you can see, there's a few places throughout the city that have hydraulic capacity issues, including two pump stations, Parrish Road and Severus Point. The structural and operational deficiencies that I mentioned, a number of things that can go wrong with pipes. The pipes can crack, they can become worse than cracks, what we call fractures. Pipes can actually just break, collapse. We get holes in pipe for a variety of reasons. Pipes are sometimes misaligned, so that when the flow is coming down and the pipes are misaligned, you have poor hydraulic conditions. We have other types of what we call non-structural, which are the operational deficiencies. And these include roots that get into the collection system, and this is a problem everywhere, there's trees. We have grease, and grease comes from a variety of sources, primarily from oil and grease that shouldn't be in the collection system at all. And again, our category of excessive INI. And these are problems, if I may add, that, you know, if you don't take care of them, they can lead to some serious other problems, such as sinkholes and basement backups, and even more INI to the collection system. Now, the condition of the collection system is dependent on a number of different variables, one of which is the age of the system. And, you know, like all of us, as we get older, we have more and more troubles. And it was certainly true with the collection system. As the collection system ages, it deteriorates. There are other factors at play as well, poor construction methods, poor materials. These are all factors that could influence the condition of the system. So what we have here is a slide showing to you the relative age of the collection system. And you're actually in pretty good shape, because most of your collection system is relatively new with, you can certainly see the bulk of it being built from the 60s or later, which is a very good thing. But you do have probably about seven miles of sewer right now that are 75 years old or older. And generally speaking, in the industry, we consider that a collection system's good for about 75 or 100 years. So, so these are sewers where we consider their useful life is probably, pretty much coming to an end. Age is not the only factor, as I mentioned. There's other factors that I did mention, and so as a result of that, we inspect sewers. And of the sewers that have been inspected to date, about 8% of the ones that we inspected are considered a grade four or five. Well, this is actually a poor condition. Both of those grades are poor. Five is the worst, that's a, you need to take a close look at those immediately. But about 8% of the system that we've inspected is in that grade of four or five, four or five category. So these are sewers that really need attention very soon, so that we can avoid any kind of catastrophic problem.
How much of the system, what percentage of the system have you inspected?
To date, with the data that we had, about 16% of the system's been inspected. And this is part of our recommendations in terms of continuing those inspections.
16%?
Yes.
So 8% of that 16%?
8% of the 16 has, yes, the condition grades are four. Now, because of the way the sewers have been inspected, which we've, you know, we've got them inspected from various places throughout the city, one can extrapolate that, more or less, about 8% of the whole system's probably in that condition. So, the condition of the pipe is, you know, somewhat compromised in those locations. And, you know, we're gonna be recommending that these are sewers that really need some attention. You're better off fixing pipes now rather than waiting to them collapse. And in addition, these conditions, both the age and the sewer condition, impacts the amount of INI that can get into the system. Yes?
Before the graph goes away, in the 1990s, there was a lot of pipe laid. How was that funded?
Most of that was funded through developers, developer-built pipelines.
Okay, thank you.
So, kind of, to support the problem of having pipes, you know, with defects in them and needing rehab or replacement, the city has had some problems in the past to the tune of about $562,000 of claims that have been paid since about fiscal year 2005 and '06. And these are as a result of either blockages or problems with capacity or system failure. I believe the system failure is pump station-related, is that correct?
Right, right.
So, you have experienced problems historically with pipes that are, you know, in poor condition?
So that's from 2005, '06 to current?
That's correct.
And that's how much we put out?
That's been the, that's been what the insurance company has paid for claims. So there's other costs that are more like, our time to deal with those and the effort that goes into those.
That's not in that.
This is more what the, what the insurance company settled with customers that have been damaged by claims. So, it's a big number.
It is.
And unfortunately, as time goes by, that number will increase if you don't pay attention to it. So, that's primarily, the prior discussion was about sewer pipes and how they can become defective and create problems. The other major source of problems in the collection system are the pump stations. Pumps wear out, the motors wear out, the equipment ages and malfunctions. Often, you end up with pump stations that have excessive maintenance, that is, the staff are having to go out too frequently. That's a good indication that probably something needs to be done to upgrade it, so you don't need as much maintenance. Equipment becomes obsolete, particularly on electrical and instrumentation-type equipment. And other issues we have with pump stations, you can end up with odors if they're not properly maintained, and we see corrosion. The photos I have here, the one on, in the middle is ragging, and these are problems that we're seeing more and more with, in pump stations, particularly with materials that are being flushed that should not be flushed. And that's a major issue for utilities around the U.S. The other is an indication of corrosion on the impeller of a pump. And corrosion will reduce the capacity of the pump over time, and to the point where eventually that pump will fail.
I don't understand that photo at all.
Yeah, the ragging?
Yeah.
I don't get that.
You don't really want to dwell on it too long. Pump stations are dirty places, and because of the-
Is that the stuff you took out of the pipe?
That would be material that came out of the pipe.
Oh, okay.
Because it was like clogging and-
I thought it was the rags coming off of the pump.
Well, yeah, I think that's exactly what it is. It came, that came out of a pump.
That is out of a-
No, she thought it was around the outside of the-
And I thought, why are you doing that?
No, 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 this is inside the pumps. This is what came through the pipe.
So this is inside the pipe that you're taking out that's nasty.
Okay.
Well, we have a problem here. Goodness, we had, I wanted to show you the, well, okay, this was supposed to work on a button. Well, let me try to explain what we have here. We have on the left, a pipe, and the dark line indicates what we call base sanitary flow. This is just pure wastewater. Well, during wet weather conditions, the INI gets into the pipe and takes up the rest of the capacity. So what I'm trying to show to you here is that throughout most of our system, the INI is the greatest portion of flow throughout the pipe. And that's true, not just in Oregon City, but throughout most of the country. On the right, the figure that dropped down here prematurely is indication of data that we collected when we did flow monitoring in preparation for this master plan. The yellow areas indicate regions with a peak to average dry weather flow ratio of about three to five. So this is moderate to high INI relative to other communities. The six to eight, which is the orange area, that's definitely high INI. Again, you know, six to eight times of the flow is wet weather compared to the dry weather. And then we have one area up in the north that's, you know, greater than nine. So, we definitely have an INI challenge ahead of us here in terms of trying to get some of that out of the collection system, so that we can restore capacity. So basically, I've started off with talking about the problems that we have, and now I want to move into what we're gonna do to fix those problems, and that is, you know, implementing a capital improvement program. And again, it address, it will address the hydraulic upgrades that are needed, it'll address the rehab and replacement program to address those sewer defects that we've talked about, and an INI abatement program to try to get a handle on where is the INI in the system, and what can we do to cost-effectively reduce that. So again, the map of the problem areas, and for each of the problem areas, for most of those, I'll say, we have recommended sewer replacement projects where we would be putting in larger pipes, so we could handle the flow that is both there now, for, because some of these are current problems, and also for the future, and upgrades to pump stations, so we can handle the projected hydraulic flow. Some of these pipes are located in 12th, 13th Division Streets, Linwood Avenue and Hazelwood Avenue. And let me remind you then also of those same locations, because these are the areas that are creating the moratorium. Hazelwood Drive, Lynn Avenue, 12th, 13th, Division, those areas. So we have pipe projects recommended for each of those to solve those hydraulic problems. And as you can see here, I mean, we're looking at about 645 acres, about a little over 10% of the city. Most of it's residential, but there's other uses there as well.
So the 645 is where the moratorium is?
Those are the green areas that are, the moratorium would take place, yes.
And these are generally older neighborhoods, right?
Generally, generally, yeah.
Hazelwood isn't?
No, I said generally.
Yeah.
I didn't say totally.
Well, when you said older, I took that to mean they're developed, and there's not a lot of opportunity for more development. A little bit, but not a lot. Just fine.
Okay. So the RNR program, this is a rehab and replacement program. The primary purpose of that program is to address the structural and operational defects. Sometimes that will require sewer replacement, and generally, that's when we have pipes that are undersized hydraulically, as well as having structural and operational defects. Or, there's limits to the hydraulics, because when we do sewer rehab, we sometimes lose some of the diameter of the pipe, so it restricts the hydraulics a little bit. But where we can go in and do sewer rehab rather than sewer replacement, we can do it for about one-half the cost of sewer replacement. So, some of the techniques that are shown here, the one on the left is what we call cured-in-place pipe, where they put a new liner into the pipe, and it seals up basically the holes or the cracks or any other defects that are in that pipe. The one on the right is a, sorry, can't talk. Oh, I'm drawing a blank.
Pipe bursting?
Pipe bursting, yeah, thank you, couldn't think of the word. And that's where you basically go in and you break the pipe as you pull a mandrel through it, and right behind where you break it, you pull in a larger diameter pipe. So these are both what we call trenchless technologies, so they have a minimal impact on the community, because you're not having to dig up the entire street. And again, if you can do that in locations, you can solve some of your INI problems, and you can restore the integrity of the pipe, and you can do so at a minimal cost if you catch it soon enough. And to help catch it, it's important that we have a sewer inspection program in place to identify ahead of time where those problem areas are, so that we can focus these RNR dollars on those problem areas. We've put money aside to do this program, but I wanted to point out that one of the things that we have not put money aside for is to replace the laterals, and that's the pipe that connects the house to the sewer. And most of the laterals are privately owned, and, but they're also a large contribution of INI. So, we're suggesting to the city that you looked at it down the road in terms of how might you fund a program to look at the laterals, but it's not currently included in the current budgeting for the RNR program. John, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Well, I did, I just, I asked Jim to make that clarification, because again, when we start looking at these costs and the impacts to rates, I thought it was important for you to see that we're, we've tried to present a solution here that both balances the impacts to the customer in terms of rates, but it's also, there's a flip side to that in how much capital we've, we're really proposing to take care of. We think we've, we've put together a responsible solution. It's costly, but it's, it's not the Cadillac version of what it could be. And so, I think the laterals are a good question, because most, most agencies, and I'm hopeful that our contingencies and our findings in our rehab program are such that we'll be able to take on those laterals, because most effective programs include the laterals as well. But in this case here, we've just, we, we backed off what we'd like to have presented, to still present a responsible solution, but it's not all-inclusive. So we're trying to maintain that balance of what the community can afford and what you're willing to accept against a good capital program.
I got a question. I mean, knowing we're dealing with water, on our side of the meter is our responsibility, on your side of the meter, it's the city's responsibility. What is the cutting point off of a sewer?
We have an internal policy that's, first of all, we require developers to build the public sewer, well, they're required to go all the way to the house, but the public portion goes all the way to the property line. In maintenance of those systems, we take it from the edge of the pavement to the main. So anything behind the curb is property owner's domain.
I remember one case that came before us where there wasn't a flapper or something, and do all, do all privates have this flapper, or are they just the older neighborhoods where there's just too much volume above their property line?
Code requires a flapper valve to go in any place where the house floor elevation is lower than the, the nearest manhole. So the manhole out on the street, if it's, if it's higher than the floor elevation, that's where the code, building official should require a flapper valve in those situations.
Okay.
And you had said there was money you were saving for, what was that for?
Savings?
Or you were-
Well, I was saying that the, if you were to do sewer rehab rather than sewer replacement, you can do it for about half the price of actually replacing the pipe.
Okay.
So, what we have done in terms of structuring our costs for the RNR program is to basically split the recommended improvements into, I think it was about half of them are, will still need to be replaced, and then we can do the other half through rehab.
Okay.
So, we've chosen kind of a middle ground there, so that we could, again, fund it, you know, responsibly.
The other reference I heard you say, Jim, was, when he says savings or allocation, it means that's what we're recommending. So there's not a new, there's not a pot of money out there that the city has-
That the city holds on to.
Holds on to for these repairs.
The big Cadillac-
If the rates are right and support capital, we may do, do that, so that we can build, you know, the appropriate project. But when Jim's talking about that, he means in the recommendation for what we need for capital needs, that's set aside.
I have a couple of questions, and one is, if you, did the laterals, would that also run on a capital, or would that be something that would be added as another rate increase? Because say, like, the laterals at my house are six years old, and his are 106 years old. You know, I don't want to be paying for Doug's laterals.
I also have 14-year-old laterals, too.
So, yeah, I think those are, those are good questions, and one of the reasons why it's, it's kind of hard to allocate those, but I think a good program, a good rehab program will go in and look at each individual lateral with a camera and figure out, does that need to be replaced, or can it, can we maintain the old, the old system? Should we allocate that to the individual property owner, or should, you know, it be a citywide, kind of, included in the citywide rate?
Right. And then along with that is we've run into a lot of, especially over at Crown Jefferson I've noticed, a lot of laterals that are running through other people's property.
Yeah, there's, so there's, you know, there's, there's challenges to every sanitary system, and Oregon City's probably got one of the more challenging ones. And something that we're, you know, as we move into that, that INI, you know, evaluation and trying to figure out where to spend our money, that's, those are details that we're gonna have to, it's gonna take time and energy to look at those.
Yeah, so how would you know who to look at, property owner or the end user?
You have to do all the testing. We have to do all the INI testing, smoke testing. We'll eventually figure out who's got what where in the lateral system, but this recommendation does not have a replacement program for those laterals right now. After we get the bigger problems fixed, when we start looking at INI, and after we've sort of done an evaluation on a calculation of all the INI that's out there and what needs to be done about it, that's when you have to decide, do we want to look at our rates now and try to apply some of those to the more egregious INI situations? And if we do, do we do that, like, the city picks up half, the property owner picks up the other half? There's, there's different formulas and mechanisms, and what we're gonna be thinking about is what's fair and equitable to everyone, because you're right, there's some of the newer homes that aren't, don't have those problems at all, and that some of those folks might not feel very good about replacing the older laterals.
One more question, and this is just on the technical part of it, but when you're looking at, you call this one pipe bursting, I think, do you look at a grade or an incline that those go at? Is there a favorite grade to have pipes at?
Downhill for one.
Yeah. Downhill's always good.
The deeper the grade, the more capacity. But, you know, for this kind of thing, we're pretty much following the old grade. So, you know, I think, for the most part, we're not gonna change the grade if we're doing a pipe bursting project. It's gonna stay pretty much the same.
Okay, thank you.
Both of the techniques that we, that I mentioned, make use of the existing pipeline and attempt to rehab it, so it's, it'll be the same grade as the original pipe.
And do you have limitations because of that? Do you have some areas that your grade is not ideal?
Right, so we'd have to evaluate, you know, obviously, if the grade weren't very, were real flat and had a lot of bellies in it, we probably would look at something different. We probably wouldn't propose either of these, we'd probably have to dig it up and replace it.
And that would change our bottom, our bottom line?
Well, I mean, the, the numbers that Brown and Caldwell's provided are, you know, conservative numbers, average numbers based on, you know, a price per foot. And some of that, we know, is gonna be handled using the lesser techniques, and others are gonna require full dig and replacement, which would be much more costly. So, you know, that's, that's really the, until we get through full TV inspection, full flow monitoring, full evaluation, and we can do that neighborhood by neighborhood. We really, and we, we should do it neighborhood by neighborhood, pick those problem areas first and look at those, and then once we do that, then we can make the determination on what the exact fix is.
Okay, thank you. Is there an estimation for the life expectancy for the rehabilitation compared to the replacement?
Generally speaking, when you put a new sewer in the ground, you can consider it to be 75 to 100 years. Generally speaking, the companies that do the type of rehab that we're talking about here suggests that you're probably adding another 50 years onto its life. So it's, honestly, it's not quite as good as a brand-new pipe, but if you can do it for half the price, that's a pretty good deal.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? The last category is, again, going back to the INI abatement program, and we're recommending that we figure out where those problem areas are. And we do that through additional flow monitoring. We've done some flow monitoring so far, but we'll do more focused flow monitoring in the problem areas. Smoke testing to find out whether we have either crossconnections with the storm system, or if we have house connections that shouldn't be connected, and that would include, say, roof drains or footing drains. Typically, those are not part of the sanitary collection system. We can do dye testing, as the lower picture shows, to find out, you know, if we dump some water into, or dye into a sewer, or into a toilet, find out which direction it's going. We'll also evaluate all the maintenance records. That helps us understand where the reoccurring problem areas are, and we can focus on those. And we'll take all that information and put it back into our model, because ultimately, what we're trying to do with this is figure out, where can we cost-effectively reduce INI? We'll never eliminate INI. And so, what we want to do is find out, where can we put money into it, into reducing it, where it's actually cost-effective and makes sense? There will be places where you know you have INI, but you just can't, you cannot cost-effectively remove it. And finally, in support of the INI program, as well as the RNR program, is the need for CCTV inspections. That's really key to understanding where those problems are. for CCTV inspections. That's really key to understanding where those problems are. So this all rolls up into the next table. And again, you've, you've seen most of these numbers. So the sewer upgrades total about $3.1 million. And what we're looking at doing is, doing that work in basically the, the next eight years. And so we're distributing the money as shown, with the bulk of the work being done in the first four years. So that would address those moratorium areas that we've identified. In addition, we had identified about $2.17 million in pump station deficiencies. The bulk of that work would be done in the first eight years. And then, from there on, we've budgeted money just to, for continued upgrades to the pump stations, because they, they'll continually need care. Based on the defects that we've seen and the percentage of the system that we've seen with poor condition, we're recommending the next line, which is the R and R program. Now, we're starting off with about $154,000 per year. And part of what we're doing here is, is looking at, you know, the total budget for the capital program and, and recognizing we really need to do those sewer upgrades and pump station upgrades first. And then we'll start moving away as we complete those projects and investing more money into the R and R program, which is why the R and R program increases in price considerably, starting in year five and continuing out through year 12. Then to help us understand where that I and I's coming from and what we can do about that, we've, we're showing about $182,000 a year. That's for flow monitoring, dye testing, additional modeling, and also the CCTV inspections. So bringing that all together, it shows you the numbers on the bottom, and, you know, these are the numbers that we shared with our, our coworkers here from FCS with the raid, and they'll talk more about that. John, would you like to touch on this one?
Yeah, just real quickly. I mean, we've pretty much touched on all these already. So, you know, I think the one thing that we haven't touched on much is the day-to-day operations. And, you know, we, we take a lot of pride, our operators take a lot of pride in what they do. And I think it's important to acknowledge that work and recognize that, you know, that's what your rates have been buying for the most part over the last few years. We have had some funding available for capital, and we have had some funding available for reimbursement of debt funding. But the majority of the rates that we collect today are for, for our operations crews. And we'd like to supplement that. It's not, these detailed reviews of our collection system require more effort than we're putting in. A lot of that will contract out. We think that it makes sense to do some of that internally. So we have been suggested some, an additional operations staff person. And then when we start defining those projects, to make sure we have the engineering support to be able to, to put those projects together in a way that isn't gonna result in chaos out in the, out in the real world. So we've, we want to focus our effort on, on capital improvement planning and, and, and projects, and continue to focus on operation and maintenance. We do need to deal with that, you know, things like downspout disconnects, you know, if we've got property owners that have their rain drains connected, you know, that's, that's something that we'll probably bring before the city commission and be able to address those and maybe get those disconnected so that they're, right off the bat, their inflow, that's, that would be a, you'd see the results of that right away. So as we, you know, we don't have those policies, so we want to bring those to you. And then the sewer lateral replacement program, I think, as we start moving into evaluation of those laterals, maybe we've got a bunch of laterals that are in great shape, and we don't have to deal with those. But we don't know, we don't have that detail yet. So until we kind of focus on the TV inspection and focus on flow monitoring and smoke testing, well, you know, that's something that we have to bring, bring back and kind of say, well, you know, we've, we think we've got the money to cover that. Or maybe, maybe not. Maybe we need to look towards those property owners with the most problematic laterals and look to them to help fix those.
Now, I assume the, the connected storm drains of more recent housing developments go into the stormwater system and not into the wastewater system?
That's correct.
So that issue, the disconnecting is for the older neighborhoods?
That's right.
Do you have a year on that, that the code needs, or?
No, I don't. I know we did a separation project in the early 90s, and so I know it was prior to that, but we've had, we've had a separated system for several years. We've been, every once in a while, we, we do find those even without a robust evaluation program, but...
Wasn't that separation part of the moratorium we had back in the 70s, well, back in the 80s?
Yeah. I think there was more of that also when we built the treatment plant, the Tri-City Treatment Plant. So that was in the, that was in the early 80s. So you're probably right, Doug. So with that, that kind of presents the problem. And we have, you know, there are problems out there.
There are problems out there.
We don't, we don't feel great about asking for rate increases. I think that's, I think, you know, if we didn't have to have them, we, we wouldn't ask for them. But we feel pretty strongly about the fact that we've got a problem out there. We need to deal with it. And so, John, if you could move forward with your financial end of this, financial solutions, that'd be great.
John? I'll go through this as, as quickly as I can. Unfortunately, nothing's really changed on the financial analysis since we talked in, in August. But I'll, so I'll go briefly through utility rate basics, the revenue requirement, talk about our key assumptions, and then get to the results. We did add a couple of slides, one in particular that I think will be helpful in seeing where the money is going in the first few years, and which capital's being targeted specifically. But first, as far as, as utility rate basics, just a reminder that the, the idea with the utility is that this is to be a self-supporting enterprise within the government, and that when we're, when we're doing a rate analysis, the, the goal is to set rates such that you're generating enough revenue to keep, keep the utility fiscally healthy. Of course, that has ramifications on the health of your customer base as well. But that's really the idea. We look at all the, all the different costs and try to structure the rates so that they're, those costs are being recovered equitably. But that's really what it's about, is setting the rates such that the utility will be fiscally sound going forward. The revenue requirement, which is the target of, of the discussion tonight, is really composed of three different major inputs. And the revenue requirement is the, is the amount of money that we need from rates to meet all the financial obligations of the utility. So in determining what that amount is, we need to know what the operating costs are and forecast those looking forward. Capital costs, we've talked about that. And then also there are fiscal policies that impact the amount of revenue that needs to be recovered from rates. How much you're gonna keep in, in working capital from month to month so that you have some cushion in the case of an emergency, for example. The revenue requirement, then, once, once we have those inputs, it compares that total against the revenues that are currently being generated. And the difference is the amount that we need in a, in a rate increase. So we can also do some things to smooth out a series of increases or, or create a pattern of increases. That's, that's a fit. We've tried to do that here, and we'll show you that strategy in a minute. Some of the key assumptions you'll see reflected in our numbers are shown here. The model's built to go out to 2024. The slides in here only go out to 2020. But the fact is, after 2020, the, the increases we're showing here, they're basically inflationary, so for the rest of the period. Customer growth at about a half a percent. You see the different inflationary factors that are built into all the forecasted budget and capital numbers. And the operating fund, we are setting so that there's a minimum balance of 60 days cash operating expenses. So if you dip below that, there's a rate need to replenish it the following year. But the way that the analysis has been built, you don't fall below that, that cushion.
Oh, wait, can you go back, please? So, transfer to building reserves, what is that for?
That is the annual amount that we transfer from the sewer utility into the savings account so that we can have the funding we need to build a, a operations center.
So you currently do that?
We currently do that.
So this is just part of that?
Yep, just being transparent about the fact that those are, those are hard costs that we, we set aside.
Sewer share in, it's in the budget.
Well, as well it should be, yeah. Thank you.
The current rate structure, again, just as a refresher, a, per ERU is the single-family residential rate. The collection system portion, the city system, 2110 per month, and the Tri-City Treatment portion, $20.76 a month. So the total, $41.86 is paid uniformly by single-family residences in the city. Commercial customers pay per CCF, that's 100 cubic feet of water usage, $4.19 per 100 cubic feet. So those, those key inputs...
So, let me make...
Sure.
The sewer, the sewer rates we get are based on water consumption?
They are for commercial customers.
Okay.
That's right. For residences, all residences pay that $41.86 uniformly, yeah.
And that's monthly?
That's monthly, yeah. So the operating budget is reflected in our, in our numbers. For the current fiscal year, that totals about $5.9 million. There is some existing debt service that will be paid off in fiscal year 2019. That's a little over a half a million per year. And then the capital costs that Jim talked about, for the next five years, beginning in fiscal year 2016, those total a little less than $12 million. Our numbers include inflation, so they don't foot exactly to Jim's, because we're scheduling them by year and inflating them. They are funded by a combination of rates and SDCs. The growth-related portion funded by SDCs. So you've seen this slide before. It, it now has a companion slide. This one shows where the money is coming from for the capital projects as scheduled through 2020. And in fact, we've rescheduled some of these projects to try and actually reduce the initial rate impacts. And, and we've rescheduled them from the master plan. So these are the same numbers you saw in August, but just to let you know, the R and R program has been pushed out a little bit in order to mitigate the initial rate increases from the numbers you saw in the master plan.
The capital fund represents what exactly?
Mostly rates, but it's basically any available funds that can be used for capital. So it's, if you had grant money or residual fund carryover from a previous year, it would go into that capital fund to be used, primarily rate money. So the companion slide, you'll notice the, the stacked bar chart, when I, when I flip to the next slide, it has exactly the same pattern from year to year, but now the stacked bars will show you where the money's going. So you can see that yellow portion in the first three fiscal years after the one that we're in, those are moratorium-related projects. So, and that's, that's part of what we did was advance the moratorium-related projects, delay the repair and replacement to try and flatten this out a little bit and reduce the rate impacts. But you'll see, the blue is, is current capital that's already budgeted for the current fiscal year. The orange is the I and I program. And you'll notice, that's all existing customer-related, so none of that's SDC-funded. You'll see that in parentheses there. The R and R program in the, in the gray and getting up to, that will be, it's about a million dollars a year, a little more than that. That will hold steady from this point on, from 2020 on. Forced main improvements in the darker brown. And so anyway, that's, that's sort of, the idea was to get through the moratorium projects as soon as possible, and then address these other urgent needs.
Thank you for stating that.
That was something that we heard from the commission was more interested in seeing.
Good idea on your part.
But it needed to be clearly stated. The moratorium is the first priority, yeah.
So the, the revenue requirement forecast with all those things, the capital, the operations, the fiscal policies taken into account, results in a, in a chart like you see here, with the year-to-year revenue requirements shown in the stacked bars, and that dark line, revenues without a rate increase. So you can see, without a rate increase, the city's unable to meet, meet these needs on an ongoing basis. In order to meet those needs, what we're proposing are two about $4 increases, one after the other, 18% and 15%. And you see the impact on just the collection system portion of the rate there, the city's rate from 2110 to 2490, and then 2863. And then, basically, inflationary increases after that, and for the foreseeable future after 2020.
This is where I have an issue. That's 33% in two years. I just don't, I just don't feel our citizens are gonna appreciate that. And I think they're going to do what has happened in the past with the water issue. I just think it's, it's, I know there's a problem. I do. I get that. I just don't think that our citizens are going to appreciate it.
We, and, you know, again, if, if we didn't feel strongly about the need...
Right. No, I get it.
We, we don't like to see those kind of rate increases either. You know, the percentages are always tough to kind of hear. Our rates, as, as we'll show you, are, are probably a little low already. And maybe that's why we're in the situation that we're in, but...
Well, in what, 14 years, no rate increase at all? I mean, that is something that I just feel strongly that every department has to raise their rates 3% at least every year. Because otherwise, you get stuck in these problems.
Yeah. One, I mentioned talking to John about this briefly this week, but you know we've got a resolution that indicates the, the 6% right-of-way fee for Tri-Cities will go into wastewater projects. My understanding is generally the right-of-way fees go into the general fund or reallocated. It seems to me with this particular problem, we should be reallocating the 6% sewer right-of-way charges back to the wastewater project, as opposed to, that is dedicating that portion back from the general fund, directing it back into the sewer program.
Well, you know, if the timing and timing is everything, we, we still don't know about that 6%. So we're asking you for a decision tonight, not knowing the certainty.
We know, we know the 6% that you pay, that we pay for sewer rates for the Oregon City. We know about that one.
We do, right?
And that's the one I'm talking about.
Oh, I see. So you're suggesting that, that instead of...
Instead of going into the general fund, that money be dedicated to, well, basically to our moratorium problem.
Well, I don't know the...
That's a budget, that's a budget question. It's probably gonna have to come up before the next budget committee, but this is where the problem lies. It seems to me we should be able to direct that 6% right-of-way from our says right-of-way back to the sewer problem to, up to a point that we get the, that we get the moratorium dealt with.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioner, so, and that, so I have, there's two things that I'm known for. One is being kind of a penny pincher and the financial guy that always says, no, we can't do that. City manager knows me as that. The other is sort of the optimist, and you give me a hard time before that. I'm always the smiling person. One thing that I want to say, your comment is very well-spoken and well-thought-out. It does have implications to the general fund. So for example, you know, when we balance, we have to balance... to the general fund. So for example, you know, when we balance, we have to balance the budget and we say, we want to use that money for this, how many police officers are we looking at? Or how many other staff in the Parks Department are we looking at? I just want to make that comment. So that's a decision that we could probably talk about down the road and would like to, if you allow me to say that. The next thing is, there is some, some interesting good news here, okay? And one thing that I want to point out, I've sat with John Lewis, Public Works Director, and John Gilarducci and observed the process going through. And there is an extensive process, a couple, three months that goes through. We're going over these rates. And I will tell you that I want to give John some credit for investing a lot and pushing back on the side of what the customer perspective is. So I know that when we come here and you see sort of this final presentation, we haven't shared with you all of the exercise that we went through to get here. The original proposal was, as our consultant is supposed to do, is say, look, you've got a moratorium problem. In year one, we recommend you raise the rates 33%. I can tell you for a fact, John Lewis said, I don't think that's palatable to our customers. It's just, it's too much to lay on them in year one. Can we spread that over two? So we have examples like that. So I can tell you that we sat through meetings where we, John carefully reviewed every capital project. We extended the timeline on those as much as possible. So the, the very first picture, you recall a few months ago, probably six or eight months ago, we were very, very nervous and upset about the moratorium issue. And I thought that the rate impact was gonna be a lot worse than it is. We came to find out, going through the exercise and figuring out what the rates actually are, it looked better. When we thought we were looking at 50, 100% rate increase, I'm not gonna kid you. And we made the choice not to talk about that time because we didn't want to alarm anybody.
That was a smart move.
Yeah, I think so. Now, looking in hindsight, it was a smart move. Well, since then, we went through the process of doing the rate analysis, and John has pushed back. We've done things like, we've looked at all the projects and we've, we've spread those out as much as we can. We looked at other costs and said, what can we afford? Let's not make it a catalog program. We looked at, in terms of balancing SDCs and rates. And I'll tell you, your Public Works Director's in kind of a box. Because we are not allowed, we don't, we don't go out for bonding very often. He's got SDCs, which doesn't make, when we raise those, the home builders get a little unhappy with us. We want to keep those low.
Well, absolutely.
We, and our only other option is the rates. But I'll tell you this, we went through this process. John specifically asked John to come back and spread that over two years, not one, for the reason, the same reasons you have. And I've seen the process where we have a lot of angst about, we try to balance the needs of the system, which are extremely important. But it is not beyond us that we have our customers, our commercial and our residential community and the impacts to their budget. We think about that stuff and we, we share. We know we've heard from you that that's a lot, that creates a lot of concern. And it does for us as well. Here's my, so I know this isn't ideal, but when we, when we say 33% over two years, I want you to know, that's better than 33% now. It's 18 and 15. But if we can get past the percentages, we're talking to $3, $4 in years one and two. The upside of that is, we're doing two things. One is, we're taking care of the system early. And I know that Commissioner Mom is often expressed to us, look, if you go for 14 years like we did without having a rate increase and you kick the can down the road, you're asking for trouble. And we did that. Not you, not us, but folks did that, okay? Moving forward, if we put these rate, these rates into effect now and we fix the problems, you'll notice, starting in year three, we're at inflation for the next seven to 10 years. That is a huge plus. So, and I'm gonna go back to a real quick example where I worked for another city. In our neighboring city, we wondered why those guys never had to increase their rates and we were always behind the curve. And it turns out that about 10 years earlier, somebody made the tough decision to make the rate increases that were necessary. My point being that three, four, five years down the road, we're saving money for the customers. So right now, it's tough to swallow, but in year three, only two years from now, you're looking at being able to look at all of our customers and say, inflation only, this year, next year, next year, next year, next year, for the next 10 years. And that's a good position to be in if we do the right thing today. And you'll have to make a good decision, and I know it's a tough one, but that is an upside, that now in year three, we start to get back to inflation only and then we can kind of stick to the plan and not shock anyone from there.
So these rate increase also goes to all of our nonprofits and all, all business?
All users of the system, irrespective of property tax status and things like that.
Yeah. As, as a user fee, it has to.
Okay.
Well, thank you for.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna come back to it though. With the water rates, it was essentially a doubling of the rate. And the city tried to hide it by switching from billing every two months to billing every month, as if the public would not pick that one up. But, but.
Our public's smarter than that.
Public is very smart, yes.
You know, I don't, I don't know this would trigger the, the kind of thing that I was concerned about, but still, I would say that I'm sure everybody's got a wish list for this increase in right-of-way money we're going, going to get. The only, the only, only one that they were being sued for is from Southport. Not Southport, Tri-Cities. Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
It's from Tri-Cities. And, but the point is, we have, we have this particular issue here. And it seems to me that the Budget Committee can direct, direct that right-of-way funding that comes from the sewer rates back into its program.
Particularly the Tri-City funding?
Well, we, we committed to that by resolution. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the right-of-way that our city sewers charge, those, those 6% also be directed to wastewater.
So, so Mayor, if I, if I can interject here, we, we've already budgeted for the city contribution because that's the only contribution we knew was stable and not at issue, not subject to litigation. So we, we budgeted for that and we're spending it according to your adopted budget right now. So, so I guess what I'm saying to you is if the future Budget Committee, when we get past the two-year budget we're in now, if, if the future Budget Committee wants to look at, at that as a possibility, they could do it then. But keep in mind, this is an enterprise system, meaning that only the funds generated within the system by the rates are supposed to make it whole, make it work. That's under state law. And so we're trying to make the system remain whole on its own. We can't go in there and take money out. We can put money in if we have extra money, and I think that's what you're suggesting. And I don't have any problem with looking for that when we get to the next budget cycle, but you currently have those funds allocated and budgeted to be spent on.
True, sort of. But we have money coming in from other, from other right-of-way fees that we didn't have when we set up the budget.
We, we estimated them conservatively.
So fiscally, we're talking about that would save probably the $1.80 off of the first rate increase. If we're talking about 8, 18% versus a 6%, if we allocate those entire funds. So I do think we should talk about it further. I'm not necessarily agreeing at this point that reducing the monthly fee by a $1.80 or two bucks for all of the users of the system would, would be the best beneficial, beneficial use of those funds, but, but we should look at it.
I think that the biggest question I have, because these right-of-way fees have, you know, they've got potential, again, the challenge is, we really feel like we need to start collecting a rate increase to move forward with the moratorium piece. And that, whether it be the next budget cycle, that we make a different decision on, on how to allocate those funds, or whether, you know, I mean, again, the, the Tri-City component, that's not a guarantee.
I understand.
So, you know, I just, you know, I want to be careful. I, I wanted to make, we, we feel like the responsible solution is to keep the sewer system whole, self-supporting of itself. And so that's where we're, we're recommending. And again, Wyatt's analogy about a box, we do, we are working within a box. We don't have a lot of opportunities other than rates and SDCs. And the SDCs have some real controls on them as well. The only other thing we have is timing and how quickly we move after these fixes.
Right.
And, you know, so.
So you divided.
I think, you know, that, that, those are the constraints that we have to live within. And I, I just, I, I, I think, I'm feeling like trying to use the, the right-of-way fees that are either currently paid by the city or paid by Tri-City in this allocation are, they're not as responsible as if we would just cover them using utility rates.
Well, and the thing is, John, that's not gonna, it's an excellent idea. I think we should look into it. I don't think that saves our day today. That's not enough money.
The capital's on the, you know, averaging over $2 million a year in, in needs. So that was one thing I was wondering, without knowing exactly what revenue, potential additional revenue we're talking about.
It's not significant enough to make a need.
I'm not sure if it's, yeah.
Although I know the commission is looking for options that we can lessen the impact of this.
So you guys divided this 33% increase over two years because you wanted to make it be less of an impact, which I appreciate. So I know that it's probably not gonna be popular, but could you do it over three years? So then it's not as high of a rate increase right there. And I know that we need the money now. And I know the moratorium is there. I just think that our citizens would appreciate it.
Three years of, of rate increases, but reduce the first.
Reduce it from 1815 to make it be 36 in three years? Does that make sense?
Uh, I, it does. I mean, that's another scenario that I think we, we could pick. The issue was, you know, how quickly do we deal with the moratorium pieces?
Well, I get that. I get that. And I, I understand the need. I do. I just don't want our citizens.
I guess I, my preference would be that we, you know, if that were the consensus of the group, that we look at that versus suggesting something less.
Yeah. Yeah.
The benefit of doing that, at the end of that three-year period, you have a chance to see how additional rev, additional revenue from right-of-way fees, including, including wastewater, might be pointed into the next budget cycle, which I think would be, what, the 15, 16, 16, 17 budget cycle?
Yeah.
So by that time, you would really know whether you needed that actually third-year increase or not.
Yeah.
So Mayor, if we split that into three equal parts, it would be basically 11% each, each of the three increases. John was mentioning, suggesting to me here that maybe a better solution would be, if you want to have three, that we make the first one more substantial so they can get started on the, have more money upfront to address the moratorium.
That's what, that's what I was gonna ask. What's the effect of the moratorium?
Help me out here a little bit, Wyatt and John, but I, you know, if it was a 15, 12, 9, or something like.
Well, there's a multiplier aspect too.
Right. It compounds, so it's.
It compounds. If we don't make the first-year rate increase, it takes more because then you're not collecting the revenues in that first year.
Right.
You can figure that out in.
But it could be something like, we can try.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you, I, I personally wouldn't go for making it higher than 18% the first year.
We're talking, dialing it down.
You said not equal. You say not equal, but the first one will be higher than the second, higher than the third. The first one would still be lower.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like 15, 10, and 10, or something like that.
That's where you're gonna be anyway. Just because of the math that Wyatt talked about, we're gonna lose money because we're not collecting as much upfront. So 15, 10, and 10 is probably gonna get you there.
Okay.
Or you could go 11, 11, 11.
Well, that's, that's.
That's the point.
Where you can deal with it.
Well, then the moratorium timing is a problem.
Yeah.
So how about this? So, and I'm gonna say, as you represent, I think the 15, the 18 and the 15 was the expectation to move through the moratorium. And the loss that we have upfront in that first year, we end up having to make up. So it's a little bit like kicking the can, but not. How about this?
Yeah.
I'm gonna look at John and see if, after the presentation is over, if we can make a quick calculation with a three-year.
Because they have to think about the.
Implementation.
Sure.
Using the expectation you have. Is that worthwhile to do that? And then we can come back and.
If we're almost, we're almost done with this presentation, so that gives us about 45 minutes to.
Yeah.
Work on it.
Okay.
You can figure it out in a while. 45 minutes.
I think we can do it. And I guess the last question for John and John is to ensure that we're, that we feel that, we kind of looked at some models like that. We feel like we can address the, the regulation requirements for addressing moratorium timing with a three-year implementation. Or we'll have to look.
We were, we were programming to beat that by a couple of years, so I think we could do that.
So I think we can give it a shot. Okay.
So there are a couple, I'm sorry, a couple other projects in there too, that if we pushed them out, that gives you a little bit of cushion to get the moratorium addressed.
Okay, so let's take a look.
Time period, so I think.
Well, yeah, the moratorium has to be at the top of the list. So, you know, just throwing it out there, bonding to fix our sewer problems. What do you think of that?
We did look at the bonding issue. And as you know, and we've talked about this, you're all very well-educated on this. So there's the additional cost of the financing. And then we found that one of the, one of the great things about the, a bonding component is borrowing monies for, say, moratorium projects and then paying it back with rates. We're in a little bit of a unique situation. We do have the moratorium projects, but remember when we were talking about the master planning, that then we start going into comprehensive maintenance and analysis of the system in terms of the INI, the repairs and the R and R. You know all the analogies. So I, our system isn't set up right now in the master plan to say, borrow and take care of this problem and then pay it back, you're good to go. Our system is set up right now that take care of the problem and we're gonna have ongoing maintenance. And I would recommend bonding if it wasn't as costly and if we didn't have that continual system maintenance that we want to look forward to, because then I think we'd have money to pay back the bonds. So I think that the rate increases you're seeing here, we'll, we'll manage the system over time and then we'll see those inflationary-only increases because we're just doing one big bump that's gonna take care of the system.
So now, does this rate increase also, this chart right here, does it show commercial increase? What is a commercial increase look like?
Well, the percentage increase would be exactly the same for commercial as it is for single-family residential. And, and so we've got some sample bills on the next slide here.
Okay.
We tried to, to ballpark some commercial customers, but they vary a lot in their, in their volumes. But if we, if we consider a large user, 200 CCF of water use in a month, that bill would go from 837 to 913, which has a percentage increase that's exactly the same as it would for single-family residential. You know, that's a pretty substantial user, smaller commercial customers, you see there, the differences. And, but again, those will vary a lot depending on their, on their volumes.
We, Wyatt sent out an email this afternoon to, in response to an email that we got about commercial, concerns for commercial rates. And so there's, we haven't included it in our slideshow presentation, but we've grouped them into small, medium, large, and extra-large customer types, because we have all those types in Oregon City. So there's a fair amount of information there to kind of show you where the commercial rates would go over the, over the, I guess we've got seven-year planning horizon. So is that what you're going after? What do you?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about this real quick. So you can scroll down, Katie. Commissioners, I apologize. You received a, a letter or email this morning pretty late in the game and we wanted to respond to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not your fault. You haven't had a chance to really look through that. But I, I can walk through it really quick here.
Okay.
We, very, and I say in the email, you know, John Gilarducci basically did the same thing, but we looked at the customers and there, we have a diverse group of, of commercial businesses and we're fortunate to have that. But we just classified them in small, medium, and large. And we're talking averages now. And so if you look at this chart, this is the most simple way I could put it, was small, medium, and large. And the numbers under the small, for example, there's 266 businesses that fall under that category. And that's kind of nice because you see the very top bar there, the single-family residential home, those are the rate impacts that John Gilarducci just showed you on the residential piece. And you asked about the commercial and he was showing, this is basically the same thing he's showing, but it's got pretty blue color, so. So, but what I thought was interesting was to see the system impact. So the majority of our commercial businesses have the same impact as a single-family residential home. So they've got about the same rate increase. When you start to look at medium, large, and extra-large, so for extra-large, we're talking about the hospital and community college, they use 90 times the system that a home uses.
Yes.
So while the rate increases, and then we're looking at, you know, getting to $100 a month for, say, a large grocery store, well, they use almost 30 times what a house uses. So it really is equivalent like that. So I thought that would be helpful information for you.
That is, that is good.
I think that is kind of the, the beauty of rates based on, not consumption in this case, but usage. It's a fair system.
Right.
Right? So it's, it's an equitably fair system. You know, You know, you think about a three-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar-a-month increase for your, as a small business owner or personal, it's, that feels really huge. But, you know, we're talking, those are our largest customers, and they're, you know, that's something, and, you know, it's still, it's somebody's budget. But, you know, that's just to show you that, because we thought you would be interested in seeing that, and it's a little bit more than what John has prepared, so we wanted to share it with you as well.
Yeah, that's great, I like that. Thank you.
So, there was just one more, yeah, one more slide. It's the other one. It's okay. Yeah, there we go.
Good, Katie.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. So, the last one, and all the caveats you've heard before about how every system is different are very true. But with that proposed increase for fiscal year 2016, the current residential rate would go from forty-one eighty-six to forty-five sixty-six. That's almost the four-dollar increase we were talking about. So, you can see sort of where that would land Oregon City among its neighbors, comparable utilities. What we are not showing here are possible rate increases to all of these folks, or many of them, are undergoing rate studies right now, and may have at least inflationary increases for that same period. And then, of course, we're also proposing a second four-dollar increase for fiscal year 2017 that also isn't shown here. But many of these folks will change as well, and unfortunately, we're seeing wastewater rates doing this all over the region. But Oregon City would remain very competitive in the area.
The other thing I wanted to share about this slide, when I saw this slide, I thought, "What's going on in Westland and Gladstone that makes things so different for them?" And I think some of their, so I asked Eric Hand to do a little homework, and he's done that for me, so thank you for that, Eric. But the big thing, I think, for our costs are, we've got way more pump stations. Our pump station, we've got ten major, major pump stations. Pump stations that require generators and consume a lot of power and require regular SCADA monitoring, you know, daily visits. And we have ten of those, major pump stations. Westland and Gladstone each have one. And so, that's, that's...
What's wrong with this?
Why do we have so many?
Topography.
The land came us that way.
Westland is very similar.
It's all about topography, I think, and, you know, their systems. And the other thing is, you know, the pump stations that Westland has, and one of Gladstone's pump stations, those are maintained by Tri-City as part of the original agreement. And so, talk about subsidizing, we subsidize a little bit of those systems as well through our treatment plant rate, because they're paid for by Tri-City. So, I almost want to throw Westland and Gladstone off this chart, because they're not comparable. And it's back to that discussion about, you know, different jurisdictions have different reasons for rates. And that just explains a couple of the small ones, you know. I can't, I didn't go to the effort of trying to explain the differences of the bigger ones. But, you know, like us, we go for one, they got a floating pipe in their lake, you know? That's probably challenging to maintain, so that may be why their rates are where they're at. But I just, I, you know, these slides are great to look at, but they, they're misleading.
Yes, oh, well, absolutely.
Whether it be rates or SDCs, we're going to show you some more on SDCs at some point in the future. But sewer rate comparisons have a little bit of a misleading factor as well. But even with that, and even with our rate increases, it appears to me that we're where we should be with the proposal that we're proposing.
Finally, just a summary of the items that we've already talked about.
So, what I'm hearing from this group is, these numbers here, you know, in the resolution, we've, that's later in the regular meeting time, there's specific rates included in that. And I think what we kind of have to do is go back and, and if what you're asking, I guess that's, we need consensus on that. But if that's what you're asking us for, then we need to go back and look at those numbers and give you, you know, more specific numbers for the unit rate.
Go ahead.
I didn't have anything, I was the only one that was asking that, I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels.
We are in a very unique situation, and I totally agree with Betty. I get very squirmy when we're talking about rates. But our rates have been artificially kept low due to the lack of increase for fourteen years. And those people, those commissioners probably felt just like we do.
Yeah.
They didn't want to talk about rates, and they didn't want to raise rates. So, now we have this problem where we have system failures that are going to cause more problems. And I look at, you know, I look at the dollars per year, I don't want any increase, but every, all my other bills keep increasing. And if that four dollars can save me from having a system failure and disrupting my household, I say, "Go for it." I want the system to work, and I think that our citizens want the system to work. And when I look at the cost, I think of claims, failure of system, overflows, and getting more and more behind. And then I look at the program, and I see the way that you've tried to cut the cost. And I think that's good with a rehabilitation. So, I think that this is pretty streamlined. I think it's pretty responsible. It's not easy, though.
I would agree, but I don't mind, I think I'm okay with looking at the other numbers too, if the consensus is to do that. I would feel comfortable, I think I would feel comfortable going forward with the proposed rate that's here. I weigh all of the discussions that we've already had as well. So, I guess I don't mind seeing a three-year window. But then you got to, we got to also think of what's going to happen in the city in the next three years with everything else that we may or may not be asking the citizens to help with. And the quicker we solve the moratorium, the quicker we can start building houses.
I'm not really preferring us building houses, because most of those are not in the moratorium area.
Well...
Yeah.
Well, there's still the cloud of concern that comes along with just the label of a moratorium.
Right, right.
Well, Commissioner Smith's point that a sound sewer system allows you to build houses, commercial units, feel comfortable that you have an infrastructure system that benefits the city.
The other concern I would have is that you've only explored sixteen percent of what we currently have, correct? So, it could be a lot worse than we think, we just don't know it.
Well, we're trying to bring responsible solutions based on what we know.
Yeah.
And, you know, it could go the other way to you. So, I just, based on what we know today, we're not trying to blow this up into something that, you know, it's not. We're trying to take a very realistic look based on the information that we know.
The other point I was making was, we have committed through the resolution that any increased revenues we're getting from Tri-City, based on the right-of-way fee, would go to the wastewater program. This is predicated on what we know we have, and it's not included in it. But within that period of time, we will know whether we have that right-of-way fee or not.
Well, it depends on if it goes to the Supreme Court and how quickly they respond.
Well, we're talking about, I'm talking about by the third year, my guess is, that's going to be, that's going to be dealt with. And perhaps that third year, in fact, the increase won't have to be as large, because we might have more revenues that we've already by resolution committed, should the money arrive.
Right, yeah.
So, we just need to know, I think, before the break, whether the Commission wants us to stick with a two-year fix or a three-year. I would suggest to you, if you do go three, that you make that third year the smaller one, and make the first year a more significant one, so that we can get the moratorium fixed.
I'm, to me, we're talking about fifty or sixty cents, right?
Correct, probably a dollar twenty.
Right.
Yeah, I don't...
Depends on the difference.
...see the problem.
I support the program as is. I think it's streamlined already, and I think split over two years really helps that stain with that one-year increase. I think you've taken every step possible.
Since we can't make a decision here, we're going to, I would suggest, we come forth first with your two-year solution and find out whether you have a majority vote on the two-year solution. If you don't have a majority vote on the two-year solution, then go ahead with the three-year solution.
Work on the alternative, so we'll be prepared for either situation.
Thank you, that's great direction.
Thank you for the direction.
But I want to thank all the staff for coming out.
Yeah.
I will say one little nice closing piece, which is, this morning at the gym, I had a customer that knew I worked for the city tell me about the fact that his wife delivered a pie to the sewer crew for the great service that they provide.
That's great.
And I noticed a couple of things. First, I was happy about the compliment, but I never got word of this pie. I didn't get any piece of the pie. So, I have a little issue with Eric here, but I'm thankful for the fact that our crew does, they take a boatload of pride in what they do. And they, and really, as city staff, we want, the demand for service is high, and the expectations are high. So, we like to be able to meet that. This rate increase will help us meet that, and I appreciate the support.
Well, you've got the logic set up for the next piece of pie coming for you, because you're going to be the first one to demand the larger percentage, and then the rest of the staff are going to have subsequently smaller percentages. You've got to make that clear to your staff.
There you go, okay. That's the pie I get.
I also want to thank John, because he, I've been in Charlotte the last four or five days, and John and I have corresponded on the phone a couple of times about this. He was losing sleep about it, because again, it's not one of those things that anybody wants to have to do. And now, I think one of you mentioned, isn't this what happened before? I think it was you, Commissioner Polly, and, you know, I've been in this business thirty years, and I've seen both versions. More often than not, the can kicking happens, and it always comes back. And now we know why it's so easy to do that. And we also know with the moratorium why we can't do it this time. So, anyway, thank you, John, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, it was good.
Thank you all.
What kind of pie was it?
I don't even know. I'm going to have that conversation here a little bit.
Mayor, I didn't have anything to report.
Very good, nothing from the manager's report, then the session's adjourned, but we'll see you all in thirty-five minutes.